It's a $4,000 at least, but we give him an essence of credit of $500 because he does the cleaning of the rest of the stuff right there. Is there an inspection from the city that keeps track of that to make sure that it's done satisfactorily?
You know, there is not.
Okay. That might be advantageous. The other thing I can throw out is that I go in commercial property and where I've had realtors who take care of it, and basically it's always been recommended if there's property that would be left there. Initially, I thought I wanted to have access to that because then I could take it and sell it. Chris's point is just really important, I think we look at that. The disadvantage is this: if it's set up that way, that I get it if it's left over, there's no incentive for the tenant to keep it in good shape. And if they leave adversarially, they tend to destroy what is there, and they got trashed the whole way. So generally, realtors recommend it, set it up that whatever they bring in that is going to be theirs, they have the responsibility of taking it out. Because generally what they're looking at, they're moving to another location or something like that, and they have this long-term and short-term attitude, is that I won't protect that asset because it's their asset. If it's ours, they don't care. Excellent, I bring that up, thank you.
All right. So if you guys would like to pass this on, so that changes your answer back.
So we're supposed to strike out tonight on B4, right?
One other question. If this is the space downstairs, but what happens if he has a special group that wants to rent the downstairs and they're going to cater it? Do we rent that space to Polinkies?
They have to come through us, right?
Okay. Any questions on the vouchers?
Just the one for me that I sent you an email on. So, okay, I don't think you're here on this. Did I leave you one of these? Okay, so yeah, I had a question about $3,000 some dollars to the guy at company. I guess we did another evaluation on all flights and lots. So I was kind of surprised by the figure. I know we had asked for some more information, but another three for him was just kind of surprising.
So that was for him to look at reducing the fencing back down. Chris had moved on it after December's meetings, and we had the analysis done, it was timed a bit.
Yeah, there's just kind of, to see another $3,000 was just kind of a surprise. When is this coming back, do you know, for more special events?
Yeah, that is kind of looking for your guidance. We have, we can bring back the driving range discussion, but I also know we're talking about priorities.
Right, so it's going to be on our list for next week, right? Because it's one of the capital projects.
Yes, it's identified, so we can make sure we highlight it, so this information does come back.
Let's make sure we do this next week.
My comment is that I'm certainly not in favor of us having this company keep looking at, shorten up the net. But the question was at the time, was just not shortening up, squaring it at the end, it was, what will the cost be if we brought it back to 150, 180, or 200 yards or something like that?
And that does show you that. Chris will have to walk us through it, I'm going to have to come for the next meeting, but...
Right, that's what I asked you for.
There's some different coloring here where he shows if we, basically it's going to be some math and some guessing, but if you shorten it up, it's going to eliminate this many poles. So that you can divide into it, you need an idea of how many poles it would be. But Chris...
Right, I'll wait that, Chris is coming, thank you. Any other questions on vouchers?
You've done good, thank you.
Ken, panel?
Hit me up, my February report, I'm not going to really refer to this unless there's something in this that you would like, and if there isn't, I have no information about. It's been, I forgot.
He liked those.
Okay. Okay, Albert. Isn't that cool? That's new, that's new.
Haven't seen that one before.
There's an arrow there, okay. There's an arrow that starts at the bottom and goes up. Okay, we talked last time when I did the statistics for the 2017 year, one of the things that was quite amazing was the growth in attendance to our programming. And so I thought what I'd do today is give you an idea of what that growth looked like and my estimate of where it's coming from. So as you can see, I went back to 2014, that year we had 5,000 kids. 2015, it dropped back to 4,000 through 10, and then we hired Jandy. And zoom, it went up to 6,064 in 2016, and then last year, zoo, super zoom, to 10,141. Okay, so what happened? Well, besides Jandy coming, some of our approach to programming changed. And one of the things that happened is going after larger community-wide events, events that would not necessarily take place in the library because the library is too small, but could take, but would take place elsewhere in the community. And so a big one was the touch-a-truck. Before, a couple years ago, we had that in our parking lot at the library. But for two years now, we've done it at Town Square, and that just exploded as far as attendance. Halloween, we've always done it at the library. This past year, 2017, we decided to try it out in Town Square Park again because we had such good response to touch-a-truck, and there was a lot of interest in the community in putting up booths for Halloween. So we crossed our fingers, hoping that it wouldn't rain, and so we did that out in Town Square, and that exploded too. And then Santa at the library, that was still at the library, still had a good attendance to that. Last summer, we did, again, we were running into space problems, so we did two events, two of our summer reading events out in the parks, one with Rocky Hill and one with MacTravillion, which afforded an opportunity to have a lot more participation. And then also, two of Jandy's programs, Move and Root and the STEM Storytime, which is also known as Tinker Tots, got a very, very positive and enthusiastic response from the community, lots and lots of kids coming to that. So that's on one side of it. And on the other side of it is the introduction of tweens and teens events that clicked finally. Trying to get that group to come to the library is very difficult. They've got busy schedules, they're starting to be involved in real sports teams and real music events and things like that. So it's pretty tough, there's a lot of competition for their attention. But we found a couple things, and one of them is the nerf force. We have kids asking, when's the next one, when's the next one? So a lot of anticipation, a lot of participation in that from the tweens age group. Then we also had the teen and tweens crafts that we started. We were doing kids' crafts, elementary school, and then adult crafts. And then some of the teens were coming and saying, we really like those adult crafts, but we kind of like to do it ourselves and not with mom or dad. So we started a teen tweens craft time, and that, you'll see in a few minutes, has garnered a lot of attention from that crowd. Again, the Halloween at Town Square Park, when we had it at the library, we really pitched it to the little kids, really little kids, only halfway maybe through elementary school. But with it going out at the park, it made it an event that could be enjoyed by a much larger age group. And then another thing that we did was some meet and greets, and that have really gone over big for the little kids. But then we did the Star Wars meet and greet, that really was attractive to the tweens again, having them come in. So what a meet and greet is, is you have people come who are participating, in this case, in a Star Wars club, and they dress up as Star Wars characters, and then stage some of the things, and then help the kids. Well, I think what they did, one of the things they did was, we helped them make their own quote-unquote lightsabers, and then they staged some lightsaber battles that the kids could be involved in. So with those kinds of things, I think we can definitely point to what it is that is bringing them in. It's some of these larger community-wide events, and finally finding something that clicks with the teen and tweens after many, many years of trying to figure that out. Okay, next one? Okay, I mentioned to you the Tinker Tots. Here's some pictures of the January and the February Tinker Tots. Tinker Tots is a storytime, but it begins with STEM-type activities. A couple years ago, when Katie Wykowick was doing our, was in charge of our children's programming, she did something called Storytime Plus, I don't know if you remember, and the plus was math, oh, math and science. So Tinker Tots is kind of like that, but with stepping up the game a little bit more. And so you can see, we've got, that little guy over there is looking through a quote-unquote toy microscope, so there, so some of this was, her theme this, for the next five, six months is the five senses, and so some of those were the sense of sight, and other ones were experiences in touch. So like that one down there with the question mark, those are called touch bags. And so we've got bags with something inside, so they're not supposed to look, they're supposed to put their hand in and touch, and then try to be able to figure out what it is they're touching. And then you see some matching games and feelings, things that have textures to them. And then they, I'm not sure what she's got in that, it looks like sand, but it's not, it's kind of yellowish, so, but it's something to sift through, and again, it's the touch, the tactile, and using various tools. So that's what the Tinker Tots are, and those are happening two Thursdays a month. Okay, next. Okay, and then so for the older kids, we've done, we did some Ozabots last year. This year, we were invited to partner with Liberty Creek Elementary School. They had, I guess, a STEM night, and so Jandy went and brought our Ozabots with her and did an Ozobot station. And so those are, you see some kids over at Liberty Creek School and their parents for that STEM night they had. And so we supplied the Ozabots, and she went over and showed them how to use them. So it was a big hit, from what I hear. And then the Cublets, as over here, these are small robots as well, and I desperately tried to learn how to download a Facebook video to PowerPoint, and I never, I couldn't figure it out. Maybe between now and next month, I'll be able to figure it out, but it just escaped me. So all I could do was give you a picture. But we had a Cublets time, and if you go on Facebook, you can see the video that we took of the kids. You put them together in certain ways, and it makes them move and do certain things. So they move and twirl around and that kind of stuff. So that was about, the kids had a lot of fun with that. And so I think that was though a kit that came around from the state library. So we'll have to evaluate that, see if we want to buy some ourselves and continue that. Okay. Okay, of course, another big thing that libraries are very, very interested in and have been since forever is early literacy. So this time, we combined early, our early literacy focus with the fact that it was Dr. Zeus's birthday last Friday, and our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program. So that program is exactly what it says. It's a challenge for parents to read to their children 1,000 books before kindergarten. So they can start as babies if they want to in the program. And then they keep track of their books. We've got a bulletin board in the hallway there at the library, and every time they get up to another 100 books, they get a stick, they get something to put up on the bulletin board with their name on it. And so we've had a handful of kids actually get to 1,000 books since last year. So it's a good example of combining a lot of different interests of the library into one event that covers a lot of area. Okay? Okay, this was one of our teen tweens crafts, and it was making slime. And you can, as you can see, it was very, very popular. The room was absolutely crowded, and kids were learning how to make slime. You can see the guy over there, he's having a good time stretching out his slime, just testing the lengths to which the slime can be stretched. So yeah, a lot of fun, a lot of fun that night. Okay? Okay, so that was, that's things that we've done in January and February. This is what's coming up. We've got a fellow that came and said he would like to try giving free introductory guitar lessons for a month. So that is going to be through the month of March and April. So that's something completely new, we've never had anybody approach us with that, so we'll see what happens. We'll have a STEM time with radical Rick called Extreme Science, going to be doing experimenting with forces. We're going to be doing another STEM project for older kids called Do-It-Yourself Marble Coasters. They'll be building their own coasters for marbles to traverse. We're going to, we haven't in a couple of years done the Legomania contest, and we'll be doing that in March. Legomania, the kids make an original Lego creation at home, they bring it to the library for display, and then it gets voted on to see what the most popular creation is. If I can manage it, I'm going to try to bring the winners and the hunters up here next time for the workshop. Then down at the bottom, it is the front page of our March newsletter, and as you see, we were able to acquire through the help of the Friends of the Library Mobius Family Passes, so they are now ready to go. So they are on first come, first served basis. We are going to be limiting them to only Liberty Lake residents, though. But they are good for one visit for a family of two adults and four kids, they are good for seven days from the time that they get checked out, and they can, yeah, to be used. So we're excited about that, and we've only just started advertising, so we'll see what happens. We haven't, anybody stepped up yet and said anything?
Can I ask, with those, will it all be allowed, one home to use it one time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One time in a seven-day period, yeah. And then, and no homes, this is a, we'd be first come, first served, whoever gets it first, checked out.
And how many of those do we have available?
Two.
Two sets. Very good.
Yeah, so the Friends of the Library want that for us.
And what, excuse me, what would be the cost or something like that?
It's $175 for each.
Wow.
That's great.
Yeah, and so we get to use them over 52 times.
Wow.
Okay.
That's a good value.
A piece, so, okay, yes, okay. Okay, off to the future. So next month, I'm going to be talking about BICEC, which is the Book Industry Standard and Communications System that we are going to be reorganizing our juvenile nonfiction. And also, as I said, I'm hoping that I'll be able to bring the winners of our Legomania contest, so you can enjoy them as well. So that's what I've got planned for next month.
I have a question. Pamela, my understanding, all the council members were interviewed by the library trustees, and I haven't really discussed it with any of the other council members. But when and how are we supposed to, going to get some feedback on those interviews?
Sure. Mr. Solberg has compiled a report on that, so I would assume that he would be the one that would be sending that to you. If he does not, please let me know, and I'll either ask him to, yeah, I'll ask him to, or I can forward it to you because I've got a copy.
Or would he prefer to make a presentation before sending it to the council?
Or, right, or you could ask him to make a presentation.
He may be here tonight, he usually comes to me.
Yeah. My assumptions.
Pamela, I'm so grateful for your contributions to that family quality of life piece. It's really like, I observed one of the big values, I think, gestures in the city, and your work for the library just ever. Thanks.
Chief.
All right. Do you need any data, members of the council?
A few things to go over tonight. First thing I want to address is the parking ordinance that you have on the agenda, it would be second of need tonight. So I just wanted to see if there was any questions about that, part of the council meeting?
If I may, I have one question, and I'm happy just to discuss it with you. Within the body of that ordinance, there's language that says that after a, and I'm paraphrasing, after an adequate amount of time, or something to that effect, all right, which is very nebulous. Can you explain your desire to have that particular refurbage, instead of saying if it's there more than four days after notification, something would be done?
Well, with this, what we're really trying to do is accommodate those that we might not be able to get in touch with. So we didn't want a hard and fast rule of, okay, if it's there for 72 hours, we're going to ticket it, we're going to wait for a day, and then we're going to go impound the vehicle after, you know, 24 hours after that. The way that our department works with the shift work, and, you know, with the toll hour shifts, and some people are off for four days, and so we just wanted to keep it not so kind of a hard and fast rule on that. So our total goal in this is just to have an opportunity to reach out, contact a person that may be in violation, and give them an opportunity to remedy the situation. That is how we do that.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I attended the homeowners association meeting a couple of weeks ago, and made them aware of the fact, made the board aware of the fact that the city was working on the parking ordinance, and brought up the fact that the parking ordinance is less restrictive than the homeowners association rules are. And raised a question, I think you made the comment, that the ordinance supersedes any HOA regulations. They didn't seem to buy that. And with theirs being less restrictive, I would think that perhaps, we ought to think about making the two consistent, so that there's no question about what's going to be done, who's going to be doing it. Right now, if I had a problem, I'd go through the HOA because they're less restrictive, and they're probably going to be a lot more responsive. If I say, okay, I've got this recreational vehicle parked out in front of my house, it's been there for over 48 hours, would you please tell them to move it? And rather than waiting for 78 hours and then waiting for, you know, for the officers to come around and contact them in some manner. I think that the purpose of the ordinance is to, is to not clutter up the community. And I'm not sure what the best way to do that is. Do you have any thoughts on it?
Well, we've had lots of discussion with several of the council members, and specifically the Public Safety Committee, before coming up with the ordinance. I'll tell you that not all the homeowners associations within Wberry Lake have the same timeframes for parked vehicles, so trying to be consistent with any one of them is not going to happen because they're different. I would say that the, much as I love the homeowners associations, they have not been responsive to peoples that have complained about this specific issue. We've heard that from lots of people, which is one of the reasons why we are addressing it, because the HOAs are not.
Yeah, well, I asked them about their procedures for addressing the issues, and their procedure seemed to be that they write them a letter. Well, that's not being very responsive or addressing the issue very, very quickly. So, well, I had an opportunity to complain about one in my neighborhood recently, and when I called them and told them about it, I don't want any letters sent out, I want somebody to call the property owner, and it was on Rimmel property, call the property owner and have him talk to the people who live there and have them move it, you know, which they did, and it worked out very well that way.
So part of the issue that we've dealt with with some of the complaints, though, is that vehicles have been parked in front of a home that does not belong to the homeowner or the renter, and that causes issues to try to, for the HOA to be able to make a determination as to who that vehicle belongs to, whereas we obviously, law enforcement have that database available for us very readily to determine who the owner of the vehicle is. So that's part of the reason for that ordinance, is that we've had a couple of experiences where vehicles have been parked in front of somebody's house, the vehicle does not belong to the homeowner, and we've been able to remedy that being very creative in our interpretation of a current ordinance that we have. So this, this law really tightens that up, provides us an extra tool that we need to address that issue. And the other thing I just mentioned to your comment is that, you know, HOA, CCNRs are that, they are rules that are governed by the homeowners association. The ordinance is going to be a city law where it's going to take precedence over an HOA rule.
Chief, how do we address the issue of somebody has their vehicle there, and they're told to move it, and they move it, they're gone for two days, three days, or a week, and they come back?
Yeah, that's...
Because that...
And that, that would be...
That's an issue.
It would be a lot of them are moved.
Right. So every time they move it, if they come back 25 hours later, we have to start the process, is that understandable? Not acceptable, but understandable.
After conversations, I appreciate that this is at least a step forward compared where we're at, so maybe a stepping stone, hopefully, but appreciate it, yeah.
I know with the HOA, and what Bob's referring to, we're both in the same one, they have over 1,400 homes, and they had an issue well over a year ago of somebody parking. It took them a year to get that corrected, letters back and forth, back and forth, but to me, it was an absolute...
I think the ordinance looks great, thanks for your work.
I'll look at those too.
All right. Next thing I have on my agendas, just to really talk about the Board Pudge event that we had last weekend at the Blayton Park to raise funds and awareness for local Special Olympics athletes. We had a great turnout, we met our fundraising goal, we raised just over $47,000 on Saturday. And it was cold, it was snowing.
It was cold.
It made it difficult to do the setup, but I want to thank Jen and her crew for being there for us, and made it much easier to set up and tear down, and anyways, it was a good event. We tied it into an assembly at the Wberry Lake Elementary School. They did a penny drive for us, and at that, for this event, they raised over $1,200 during their penny drive, and so we did an assembly for them and talked about making a difference and how just a little bit can make a big difference in someone's life. And Special Athletes attended that assembly, along with law enforcement, so it was really a nice event. USA Games is coming up, which is another Special Olympics event. Because Wberry Lake has been for the last three years now the top fundraiser in the state of Washington, and as a matter of fact, we were worried because City of Seattle Police Department decided we didn't like the therefore funded Seattle, and they raised a lot of money because they have big numbers, you know, they have 1,500 police officers. So we were worried, but we did beat them in our fundraising efforts.
Isn't that amazing?
So because of that, the USA Games, which is going to be this summer, where Special Olympic athletes and law enforcement officers from all across the United States will be coming to Washington State, and the Summer Games are going to be held at Husky Stadium. We run the Flame of Hope, the Olympic torch, across the state to light the cauldron at Husky Stadium for opening ceremonies. The kickoff for that run across the state, so every single, a representative from every state athlete, and a law enforcement officer from every state will come to Wberry Lake on June 27th, and we will have the first kickoff, lighting the torch, running through our community, a little ceremony, and then they'll head off. Two teams, one east from Washington, one west from Washington, will all meet up again in Seattle for the final run at Husky Stadium. So we're honored to have them here, and so more to come on that, but Mr. Mayor, would you like to have you be part of that?
I would be part of that.
That's awesome.
That was awesome, that was just...
What day of the week is that?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Because we always tell them those people here early in the morning, 6:45 in the morning.
Let us know what we can do to maybe some... Let us know what we can do to, maybe some ideas to make this a special feeling.
Yes, definitely. So we're very honored to have them start here in W Lake.
Absolutely.
I think that's sort of our special Olympics, but we'll move on to another project I'm involved in, which is communication integration. So our nine-one-one center, Spokane Police has their own dispatch center. Sheriff's Office has their own dispatch center. Fire Department has their own dispatch center. Nine-one-one has their function there. They're all under one roof, but they are operated under separate entities. So for a very long time, actually since I've been here, so since two thousand and two, we've been trying to get a consolidated communication center where everybody, it's a new government entity. And they all work as a civilian organization instead of a SPD organization, sheriff's office organization, a fire department organization. We are getting very close to making that happen this year. This year, I'm chairing the nine-one-one committee. Another mayor has said on that and enjoyed it very much. Oh, it's wonderful. Not so much. Ours are great. So we are moving forward. We are right now trying to create the charter in a county ordinance that would create this new government entity that'd be responsible for that. We are, we have a little glitch trying to work on what they're calling weighted voting. So we're going to establish new board of directors. That board of directors will be very similar to the current board of directors for the nine-one-one board, which means it's the chiefs and the sheriff and the fire chiefs on the board. But we're fighting. We're fighting about who gets the most weight during a vote of the new board. And SPD thinks that they should have the most weight because they're the biggest player and contribute the most money. And Sheriff's Office doesn't necessarily see it that way. So we're trying to get over this one little hurdle and then hopefully we manage that this week.
I think what will help you is to talk about when you're going to have a weighted vote. So only five or six votes, maybe, will ever come up to a weighted vote. We had the same thing.
Right.
A number of different groups. So if you start to say, hey, we're not going to have a weighted vote on everything, you'll have to call for a weighted vote, blah, 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 and make up the borders.
Yes, so we have consultants that works with communication centers. He's helping us do this. We're meeting with them and all the stakeholders on Friday. So hopefully that ironed that one detail out and we can move forward. But it's a huge deal for the county because they've been trying this for long before I was in here. We have first aid seat guard training coming up, March twenty-seventh. It's open up to all city staff. We do that every two years. So March twenty-seventh, one P M. at the police department. Another project we're working on is, this is interesting because it's changed from what we thought of this. So you might have heard of an organization called FirstNet. FirstNet is actually a new federal government organization. And what they were designed to be in existence for is to provide a communications resource for public safety and first responders. So originally, when they were talking about this, FirstNet was going to be free internet and free phone service for public safety officials in their official capacity. So our computers have AirCards in them, we have the smartphones, and we pay a monthly fee for that. The new program was supposed to be, costs nothing for public safety, but that's not the case. AT&amp;T won the contract nationwide for this FirstNet. The governor of Washington signed to opt into that. So we're going to be participating in the FirstNet in Washington State. So I'm now with AT&amp;T and it's not exactly as initially designed. So it's not going to be free. There is a cost associated, just like there is now re-contracting now with Verizon. We may switch to AT&amp;T, maybe. Don't have to, thinking about it. The other thing that it does though is that originally it was supposed to be a dedicated network for law first responders. But I learned from AT&amp;T that that's not the case. What they're actually doing is you use the public network, but as a FirstNet subscriber, you get priority for phone calls and data on your computer, when you're on the same network. So we're going to test AT&amp;T's service out here and then also kind of in the remote areas that we work as we're assisting the sheriff's office to see if we have good coverage. And we may be switching eventually to the new FirstNet AT&amp;T for our phones and AirCards on our computers.
What's the value?
So the value comes in that as a FirstNet subscriber, you get priority. So that, the example they showed us, again, we're small, so it's difficult to kind of scale it here. But they used the Super Bowl, for example. So they actually showed a demonstration of, you know, however many, eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand people at the Super Bowl. After the game was over, people were on their phones, right, in a very small area. So they compared a Verizon service phone to an AT&amp;T phone, public phone, and the AT&amp;T FirstNet phone. And the Verizon phone did not load, could not download because the network was being used. The AT&amp;T phone loaded, but extremely slow, but the AT&amp;T FirstNet phone loaded like that. So it recognizes you as a FirstNet subscriber and provides you priority. So if we were to have an incident that brought in a lot of resources to our community, all first responders would have the access to the data and to the phones over AMV. So the example that was brought up, we don't have it here, but Freeman High School shooting where lots of resources were there. They had an issue because of the number of parents and kids and everybody on that network trying to use that. The first responders could not have access.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go to that, I hope. And then last thing I have is just some crime stats I'd like to share with you. I'll pass this out so you can take a look at it. It's not as pretty as anything that ten or RJ is at best. But just to give you an idea of, this is a comparison of January to March of two thousand and seventeen compared to January to March of two thousand and eighteen. So it just shows our law enforcement incidents in that period of time is up twenty-four percent, which is a lot for less than a three-month period of time. So you can see where our incidents are a lot fewer percentage higher than they were last year this time. And when you look at percentage of changes, when you get the small numbers, those are always fine. So our arrests, our adult arrests are down ten percent, our juvenile arrests are down a hundred and thirty-three percent. That's because it went from seven to three. Our tickets and citations are way up, three hundred and fifty percent in that period of time. And that is really because of Officer Jordan. He was, he was...
He's our revenue manager?
Not all of it, but, you know, get that and it motivates other people to get at it.
He's on Friday and Saturday nights, right?
Yes. Tuesdays and Saturdays. And then you can see where our collisions are at as well, so very consistent here, here on those. If there's anything else that you'd like to, if I just took a stab at some things that might be interesting, things that we can change, we can do to track. But if there are things you're interested in seeing, please let me know because I knew, represent management system, writing me almost any type of report.
Curiosity, with the increase in the tickets and citations, about what have you seen with regards to any increase with regards to the destructive driving law?
Yeah, nothing huge in that category.
Okay, I was curious.
Good?
That's it.
Thank you. Before we break, two comments I'd like to make. One, put something on the board, is RJ, I know that, I'm sitting here looking at her screen and then I look up there and I can tell you that there is so much more color saturation, distinguishable colors, shades and shadows coming across her screen than what we're seeing up there. Okay? And I expect us to be able to get that from the TVs as well. So we're looking forward to that, you know? And the second thing is, before we go to break and then on to the meeting, are there any other items on the agenda for tonight's meeting that we need to discuss? We all good on the purchases and everything?
I've got a couple of small questions that will take a while once we get there.
Good. Thank you very much.
Bring us wisdom to listen and to act.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, hold order, so, let's see.
Mr. Mary, I'll move to excuse Mayor Tim Breckner.
Second.
Let us have further discussion on hearing our home courtesy. Aye.
Aye.
So it'll be closed before you know it.
Ms. Mary, I move the agenda for you with the exception of action, we will still need a report which will be moved to a different.
Which one is that?
That's the trailhead golf course.
In session, thank you. Second.
Please for the, please for the suppression, so all of them say aye.
Aye.
Citizen comments?
Hey.
This is white comic, welcome to the thing. Would like to cut here for me? Or just hold your peace until the end of the game? Well, go on, present a tape, well, guess what? Right here. Appreciation of service, plan the building and service of Major Amanda. Where she at?
There she is.
Yeah, I think you're, I think I'm longest serving employee.
Maybe third, I think Brady.
Brady, I don't know. Oh, we don't have that. So I know you beat Travis out, so, anyway. On behalf of our council, we want to remember that you've served seventeen years of service. We appreciate it. And I think that the most appropriate thing to say about Amanda was said by Greg Dorn. Greg Dorn comes up and he's done our comprehensive plan and all this stuff. Two, I think, two cycles, so, big, big project. And he said, you know, you have a treasure, you have Amanda. She's the Google of planning. The Google of planning, I'll let you have some words if you'd like. How much, under the eyes?
I don't wing it quite as well as I used to, so I should write a little something down. I have learned a lot in my sixteen years of, and I've worked with a lot of fantastic volunteers, citizens, applicants, businesses and colleagues. I want to thank everyone and I appreciate this special recognition, but I also want to recognize my great current and previous team members. I have some of those here today. You guys probably recognize my whole face here. And there's two in particular who I'd like to accept this on their behalf as well. Thank you for your great sixteen years. And I guess I forgot to introduce my family here with me today. It's my husband, Mark, my mom, Gloria, and my kids, Olivia and Liam.
Get Ben.
Yep.
Amanda, that's the shortest time I ever heard you speak.
Well, you're going to be sorely missed, Amanda.
Absolutely.
I don't think there's any words to express how much we're going to miss you.
All right, reports sitting, so we have a planning commission here. Anything you want to say, Stan, or your crew?
No, at this time I've got some additional comments and we hit that section later on.
Okay. Any library board people in here? Do I have our Sura district commissioner here? Okay, you guys are, Fire District's not here? Everybody's watching the Gonzaga.
So are we shooting her record, Tony?
Well, probably will be. These are all three pointers. So RJ, where are you at?
I'm over here. I'm hiding. All right, so it's the administrator's report. One thing I didn't mention earlier at the workshop is the city did receive the AWC Well City Award for two thousand and eighteen. So I believe it's like five years straight. It gives a two percent discount. Our medical recognizes a well city. That's about nine thousand dollars a year. Want to put a number to it. The first item on the city administrator report, just kind of refresher, we touched on this at the workshop last week. The mayor did fly over to Olympia on February twenty-first. This was in, we had washed out here to kind of give a report on the Harburg Road, the Henry Road interchange and what the Barker means were and that there was some conversations that we need to have over in Olympia. So I know the mayor met with legislators over there regarding the projects, trying to secure about a half a million dollars in funding that's still being discussed in the legislature. This is a shorter session for them. They should actually be wrapping up this week if they haven't already wrapped up already. And one exciting information you're going to get back from the future is having somebody over there in Olympia to represent us as a city and inform the lobbyists. So there is more information coming forward regarding that. Having someone over there to represent us and our specific needs for this area to move our projects forward could be imperative. Also, the school district's looking at having someone as well. There might be a potential to share of that. We'll have more information going forward. Now, Mary, you have anything else to relay?
Well, Ben and I both went together, Ben Small, had a great reception. And we met with a group of lobbyists that were suggested by Senator Peck. And so Ben and I were looking at a conjoined work with that. And involving, coming back, we sort of mentioned that to some of our other partners. We talked to one of the Sura district commissioners, not the one, not not even named, but Tom Eggen has been a part of that consortium. The Fire District has been a part of that because we're all interested in this. Road projects and the street projects and the infrastructure projects. And then in some of the property orders, that would be involved with the interchange. So I don't believe all the costs will fall to the city, but I think it's the, one of the things I talked to Mayor Tim Schip and Breckner about, is that we're both in the pharmaceutical business and you have reach and you have to have frequency. And we can reach out to the people we go to, but sometimes you need the frequency there to make sure that the message is taking place when you're not there. So we'll bring that forward probably in April. Right now, we still do not know officially yet about the funding for the design work that we put forward. We think we still, hopefully it will come through. But we'll pull those next to recordings. We'll be first to know. RJ?
So next week, we have our next special workshop. Yesterday, if you didn't receive, we just received a spreadsheet regarding the capa facilities plan on there. There's two tabs in lunch to be aware about this because we have seventy-eight projects loaded, but there are actually a few of those projects have already been completed. Some of those projects are not actually city projects, but like we list the fire, the fire building, which has been completed, the school and a few other public agencies. We don't have control, but we have to identify them on our CFP. And then there's the projects that are specifically in the lift area that are being developed or built that are on that list. But then there's, you take those out and there's about forty-six, forty-eight projects that the city does have control of and those are the ones that we were looking to prioritize and focus on. Also attached to that, you should see the capa facilities plan. So when you have questions about a project on there, there's more detail behind that. So if you didn't receive it because it was about four mags, let me know and I'll print a hard copy out for you. Any questions on that?
Just one, sir.
Yeah.
Did those projects come with the associated costs as we've discussed on the earlier programs?
They have estimated costs on some of them. Some of them are to be determined. The problem with some of the costs on there because they're dated, when we did, the one that's been... that's been adopted, the capital facilities plan was adopted back in late of 2015, so if you look at the driving range, it's only going to say $100,000, because we were just talking at that point about the east fencing. We know that number is 1.7 million, or at least that's the estimate that we've put in place, but we haven't, we haven't officially adopted it, upgraded, and we can talk about that on the 13th. And I haven't put any identifying funding sources to them yet, because I wanted to hear priority first. They all are eligible for REIT, but we wouldn't do.
So one of the things we talked, sorry, one of the things we talked about last week was to have them already put into funding source buckets, so it would be easier for us to go through ahead of the meeting and figure out, within those buckets, what our priority list is, is that's not possible?
So, we can put a number to it, and I can tell you which funds are eligible for it. So, but to try to like, knowing is one example, the community center is going to be one of the projects listed on there, that was a bond, or more likely, but that would be a discussion, how do you want me to project that one out? So, the driving range netting, the trailhead irrigation, we could tag general fund to it, and then there's a priority list to it. I can tell you how much funds are available.
Yeah, well, I think, at least part of my intent was, you know, we have road projects on there, well, we don't need to decide for the most part between a road project and maybe, you know, the netting and trail net, because we've got different funding, the utility tax, or different road things. So I want us to be able to at least do an initial sort of getting the things off the list that don't conflict with each other. It's the ones that conflict that I think are the biggest concern for us.
So, that's a good example. So the transportation projects, there, you've got the utility tax, but they're all for Harvard, some of them, well, they're also eligible for Harvard Road mitigation dollars.
But we can't use Harvard Road mitigation dollars for something like that?
No, but they'll be separated.
Right.
So those, that one's easy to identify, you know the transportation would be coming from another source. But also, depending on your priority list, REIT could be eligible for a transportation project, but like Harvard Road wouldn't be eligible for a range, driving range project, so someone fall in one bucket, but wouldn't fall in certain other.
So is it possible to get us the first pass of those that are obvious, so we know which ones that we can kind of set aside and not go through?
Yes, I agree with that.
Are you here this whole week?
I'm here this whole?
Are you here, okay, in case I have some questions, thanks.
Okay. So Orchard Park bids, so they were opened, Andrew is not here, so he'll be back here on March 20th to kind of go through those bids for everybody on that. And then, last thing I'm going to mention is, the Boy Scouts are going to go up on the Elton's Trails and be doing some cleaning, some work, they're coordinating with our operation maintenance department and that.
RJ, am I wrong, but I don't believe that Andrew's going to be back until like the 28th of March?
He's going to be in town, and he'll be here for that meeting.
Thank you.
Noddy, you came in after her.
I was late, I apologize.
That's okay, we'll just call you out for it, so. But if you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to have you speak.
Yeah, actually, just a couple of weird things. I think everyone is, the plant is completely done and up and running, so flush as much as you want, it's all taken care of. We are working now on the, we're doing the fire station, because I think you know that our fire folks have moved, and so we've got the old station, and that's going to be right up in our private education center. So probably around June, that should be done, hopefully we can work with the school district and the city owners to make sure we get focused on, engaged in that, there'll be like some presentation rooms and things like that, people will sort of see what they're on, I assume.
Question, Noddy, when you refer to that, do we have a good name for it? I mean, you said the fire station, lab and education center, I don't know if that rings, but.
Yeah, that's a good.
Needs good handle.
I don't know that we do.
Yeah. Needs good handle.
I'll look that down, that's a good point, thank you.
You can call it flush and gush.
And we also had, just so you know, there was an issue with, I think we only have room above, I should check and see if this is okay or is an issue, I think there's only room above the doors to say like Liberty Lake, and so we're going to put a Liberty Lake syrup water shit sign, you know, line with sign down on the, by the driveway, but it'll be nice to have Liberty Lake sign there, so, hopefully that'll be all right. And then, just wanted to say thanks to the city and the city council, it's like we're working together on a lot of things. One of them would be the manholes, you know, the clouds, there were some issues that happened, I think my understanding is that our folks are working with your folks really well to figure out how to prevention, really prevent that from happening, what we can do, and then we'll work together if something does happen, so thanks for that. Same thing with land lease, I think we're working together to try to lease to the city some land that we're not using right now, that the officials are not using, so that's kind of a good thing. And then, the last thing I had was thanks again too for the whole flag thing, we're getting a flag, and I took five days, well, we got to have a flag for the plant, we got to have a flag for the, for the, whatever we're going to call this other center, the ex-fire station, flush and gush, whatever, so we'll get one in there too, but very excited about the Liberty Lake flag, which is, as you all said, kind of for the entire region too, that's great. Otherwise, everything's good, it's part of the album.
Thank you. Very good force. We have, one thing I want to, this, but our Boy Scouts in the room first, because certificate, right? And participation for your badge.
Yeah, we're here with, we're a team, on Andrew Vonn and Scoutmaster, and we've got a number of scouts here for their citizenship and community merit badge.
Welcome.
All of us, it's necessary to get the merit badge, it's an attendance in the council meeting, so we're expecting great things.
We're expecting great things. There's a big, this is back, and quite frankly, you see the report, Boy Scouts, cleaning up Uplands Trail.
Yeah, that's great.
That's a big thing.
What troop is that?
Pat Shaffer.
Okay.
I'm not sure which.
Okay, what number? At Liberty Lake, though, or something?
Um, yeah, I think so.
And you see, throughout this city, right outside the flying pole, are Eagle Scout projects, and so we expect, you know, we anticipate that you will be great scouts, but we expect that you will become Eagle Scouts.
Carry on.
So, I mean, that takes a lot of involvement and commitment, but the city is always committed to helping a scout becoming an Eagle. And, same, Mary. Thank you. Action item, Mary.
Mr. Mary, move action item A, consent agenda items one and two, including the approval of February 20th, 2018, and February 27th, 2018, city council minutes, and the approval of March 6th, 2018 vouchers in the amount of $395,897.26.
Second.
Move the second, and further discussion, not hearing all courtesy, aye?
Aye.
Okay, move general business key number one, to authorize the purchase of two John Deere TS Gators in the amount of $18,740.19.
Second.
Move the second, any discussion?
I just had a quick question. Jen, I think you had four in the budget, are you looking to need two more later on?
Yes.
So you don't want four now, you just want a question?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay, general business number two, move to authorize the purchase of a Hustler 54 H mower in the amount of $14,476.41.
Second.
Move the second, further discussion, not hearing all courtesy, aye?
Aye.
And move action item B, number three, to authorize the purchase of a 25 HP Jacobson Top Cat mower in the amount of $13,940.24.
Second.
Move the second, discussion?
Just another quick question, looked like you came in really far under what you budgeted, because that's because we traded out, we were going to do two zero turns, and we can't, it's placed.
Okay.
Yeah, we are going to, wait, the total won't come in under budget.
Okay, great, thanks.
Further discussion, not hearing all courtesy, aye?
Aye.
Resolution, Dan?
City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, resolution number 18-236. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, providing for the appointment to the Spokane Transit Authority Board pursuant to City of Liberty Lake Resolution Number 02-40.
Move resolution 18-236.
Second.
Move the second, and further discussion?
Thanks for work, Mike.
Congratulations.
I thought I heard Ray wrote in, wrestle with that, it's kind of. All in favor, raise your right hand, I count six out of six, correct?
Yes.
Mike, on behalf of the mayor, I'd like to give you this paper, Uber venture into medical transportation, they'll love to see that down, that's the first thing you want to talk about when you get down there, they'll love that. Okay, secondary ordinance, Dan?
City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 175C, and ordinance amending the City of Liberty Lake Planning Commission bylaws.
Second.
Move the second?
Who was the motion?
Move ordinance 175C.
Aye, second, Ellen?
Yeah, second.
Discussion, did you want to comment on this, Stan? Not particularly, unless the council members have a question of the driving changes that are proposed. I just had, you know, the one question, we discussed, we discussed giving city council the opportunity to know who is being appointed to the planning commission, and I guess we decided that we weren't going to put that in the, in the ordinance, that we're just going to do that with a policy matter, I just wanted to kind of clarify that and confirm how we're going to do that by making it a policy matter, that the appointees that appear before city council, so we know who are confirming.
So you are correct, it will be a policy, and our city clerk has made note for all boards and commissions, that council wanted to basically informally interview, essentially go through after the nominees have been put together prior to accepting nominations, so she does have it down as one of the tasks to carry forward.
Very good, thank you.
I have a quick question, on the verbiage addition, additional advertisement may be conducted as needed, I see that the intent here is that you've got a pool of people that can be chosen from, but I just want to be clear, was there discussion, or was intentional that it's not actually going to be advertised each time a person, or we, each time there's a vacancy?
So, I had the task assigned to myself, I reassigned it, and Ann is the task holder now, and in the early fall of each year, we will do an advertisement for a roster for the planning commission, any other commissions you want to do that with, and that way, we have a roster of people that can fill vacancies as they come up, if we need to do additional advertisement, we can, but it is down to do an annual advertisement, so we maintain a roster similar to what we did in the first few years, so.
So is that as they require each time it comes up, I guess, so you think that's a case?
Yeah, if we have 20 people on the roster, then, I mean, I don't know if we want to find more, but, you know.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Not hearing all in favor?
Mayor, give me citizens' comments.
Oh, citizen, you're right, any citizen comments? Not hearing. Without citizen comments, ordinance number 175C, all in favor, raise your right hand, I count six out of six, it's adopted. Ordinance 110A, Dan?
Ordinance number 110-8, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, and ordinance amending ordinance number 110 relating to stopping, standing, parking and impoundment of unauthorized vehicles.
Can we ordinance number 110A?
Second.
Move the second, discussion? Any discussion?
That's good.
About hearing any? Eight other comments on the ordinance number 110A. Not seeing many raising their hand, come up, so, 110A, all in favor, raise your right hand, I count six out of six, it's adopted. Introduction of upcoming agenda items.
Yes, Mayor, so, right now, it looks a little light, but I know we have more items coming, youth commission will have appointees for them, and them being here present for that, we talked about the copier lease, so we'll bring that forward on March 20th as well, there's the first re-ordinance on number 245A regarding creating a parks and art commission, I believe we have some student commissioners coming as well, so we'll have a good representation of the youth that night.
Just a quick question, so April 3rd is the week of spring break, and I just wanted to put the question out now, and make sure we're not going to have any issues getting a quorum, if there's any, because I know I'll be out of town, I don't know, just kind of do a little bit of straw, for anybody else who may not be here. I guess we're good?
We'll know by the 13th, okay?
The other thing I had, I had something before.
We've got to check with the real boss.
Spokane Valley Fire Department, their community stakeholder session, and they invited myself, and they want one of the councilmen there to join. So it's 11:30 to 1:00 on Monday, April 2nd, lunch is included. So we need the RSPP tomorrow, in my interest.
Sign me up.
Citizens pay someone to put hand down. So who gets the lunch, and if you get a doggy day, you can bring it to the April 3rd. We'll have to. Any other comments? Not hearing any, for adjourned. Do we have that? Oh, citizen comments? Any other citizen comments? Thank you.
Come on, Stan.
I've got one comment, which is probably kind of off the agenda, but I want to congratulate our mayor, he just got his pilot license here to the council.
That's.
50 years in the making. Well, not in my house. Private, sport, private. Congratulations, a lot of work.